Good evening. It is now 6:30 and I will call to order the Monday, September 26, 2016 Burnsville Planning Commission. Commissioners, thanks for attending this evening. I appreciate your time. Staff, thank you very much for your time also this evening. Our first item this evening is the adoption of our posted agenda. Commissioners, do you have any changes to the posted agenda?
None from the Commissioners. Staff, any changes?
No changes.
Hearing no changes, Commissioners, I would stand for a motion. Moved by Commissioner Benke.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Workman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, and the motion carries. Our second item this evening is the approval of the minutes from the September 10, 2016 Planning Commission meeting. Commissioners, do you have any changes to the minutes that were provided in our background? Hearing none from the Commissioners. Staff, any changes?
No changes.
None from Commissioners, none from staff. Commissioners, I would stand for a motion.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Moved by Commissioner Singh.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Walter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, and the motion carries. That brings us to the third item on our agenda this evening. Number three is a continued public hearing. Showquist Properties LLC rezoning from B3 PUD to B3 General Business PUD amendment to remove .11 acres from the existing PUD. Preliminary and final plat for Burnhaven Third Edition. CUP amendment to increase the size of the car wash to allow more than, also to allow more than 25% metal exterior materials front of the maintenance center located at 14800 Burnhaven Drive. That is one of the longer things I've had to read in my tenure. Thanks, Ms. Garros. Presenting this evening is Ms. Deb Garros. Deb, you have the floor.
Thank you, Commissioners and the folks that are here in the audience this evening. The public hearing was opened and you took public testimony at your last meeting. Following that, there were a number of concerns and issues that were raised by residents during the public hearing and then also some questions that the planning commissioners had. The reason that the item was continued was to allow the applicant to be able to be here at the meeting. If you recall, the Mr. Darwin who was here, or Mr. Lindahl, excuse me, was the architect, or is the architect for the project, and he is here this evening along with Tony Brown who is working and is familiar with the entire project and can address some of the questions that were raised by Planning Commission and the public. In addition to that, the Planning Commission wanted to know what specific conditions both properties operated under. And just briefly, the subject site that we are looking at primarily tonight is the property at 14800 Burnhaven Drive. That is known as the service center site, and there is also an existing car wash on that site. The property to the north, the only reason that that property is under consideration as part of this application is because there is a proposal to add on to that existing car wash. And in order to add on another single car wash bay, they need to adjust that property line and the PUD zoning on that property to the north. With that, staff did provide Commissioners with the conditions of approval for both properties. There are several conditional use and planned unit development approvals, and those conditions were in your packet. In addition to that, we tried to summarize what the various questions were raised by the property owners, or, excuse me, the residents and Planning Commission, and those are included in your staff report. The applicant is here this evening and can address specific questions. Just very briefly, we are looking at a couple of items. The property to the south has a conditional use permit approval, and that was to allow for the freestanding car wash. So in order to add on to that car wash, to add the second car wash bay, they do need to amend that conditional use permit. Another component is that on the main service building, the applicant would like to use ACM metal panels exceeding 25% of that front area of the building. The Planning Commission, in your discussion, did not have particular issues with that. It seemed to be the consensus of the Commission that that part of the application met or is something that the Commission feels comfortable with recommending forward. The primary concerns seem to relate to the subject site to the north and to the car wash itself, primarily relating to hours of operation for the car wash, the uses that occur on the property to the north related to when they have inventory come in and trucks, and there are noise associated with those trucks, hours of operation for the facility, and how the car wash operates currently. The applicant has provided some responses to that. The issues are related to, one would be noise from the existing car wash and the blowers. The residents, should have gone back. The residents primarily on the top left part of the screen from a town home development, and I believe four out of five that spoke at the meeting were from this neighborhood, and they indicated that there was noise from the existing car wash, primarily related to the blowers. And if there's an addition, they felt that that would make the condition worse. So they're looking at, are there ways to eliminate or lessen noise associated with the car wash? The applicant has worked with staff. We provided some information to them related to the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency standards and companies that have been used in the past for their applications to do some measurement and what those standards are. The applicant indicated they're also researching other opportunities for the car wash addition that would either have a different type of system that would be quieter, or some other ways to operate, and they can address the Commission this evening on that topic. There was a question raised, is it possible to turn the car wash bays to face to the east, Burnhaven Drive, so the sound would actually emanate to the east as opposed to the west? And the applicant can address that this evening. There was information that the car wash is not limited to only Toyota employees and vehicle owners, that a resident had indicated they were able to pay cash and have their car washed there, and that is something else that the applicant can address this evening. Number four was related to the parcel to the north. The property to the north is under a separate zoning, even though it's owned by the applicant. That zoning is planned unit development, and that was approved a number of years ago to allow that site to have the car storage lot that it has without having a principal building on it. By the year 2020, if a building is not constructed on that parcel, then they will need to replat and combine that property with this property to the south. Related to the noise, we had provided that there is a condition of that 2010 PUD that indicates that there will be routinely scheduled vehicles. They were limited to the hours between 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. So that was the condition. As the Commissioners may recall, we did advise the neighbors who were in attendance that evening that in the event after city hall hours, which are basically from 8:00 to 4:30, Monday through Friday, anytime after those hours, if residents hear noise or have issues, they should contact the police department by calling 911. What will happen at that point is that the police department will be dispatched to the site. They can take a photo, they can document what is occurring, and then code enforcement, if there is a code issue, can be undertaken at that point in time. There were some indications from the neighborhood that deliveries and the maintenance facility is open 24 hours per day. That is not the case, but I will let the applicant address their hours of operation for the service center. The approved conditions for both lots were attached. Question from the Planning Commission related to the north lot, that planned unit development, and to the extent that we can open up conditions of that planned unit development and make changes. We did meet with the city attorney on that, and you're limited as to how much you can deal with that. The impact of this application is really just to remove about 5,000 square foot area of land from that north property to add it to the south property so that the building that's proposed, the building addition, can be setbacks. When making decisions related to zoning, according to the city attorney, the actions the city takes needs to be proportional to the impacts that are created on the property. And because the subject site that we are dealing with, that 4,900 square feet, currently is not a buildable part of the property. It can't be used in the current state. For that, it consists of existing parking and part of a parking island. So in respect to that, removing the PUD condition from that 4,900 square feet and allowing the subject site to the south to be expanded with the plat is really a minimal impact with regard to that PUD. And the city attorney's opinion is that the, it would not be a good idea for the city to get into that PUD. The other component of that is we are required by law to publish and send notice to property owners of what is occurring, and we did not, all we published was that we're looking at the PUD amendment to remove this small piece of property. No other changes were cited or published as part of the hearing notice. The next item relates to hours of operation for the car wash and the service center. Again, the applicant will address that for the Commission. And one other item that occurred, we did receive a phone call from an individual, Mark Bone of 14714 Courtyard Circle. He called on September 14th and indicated that he did not hear the car wash from his property or have issues with that. His primary issues, if I can get to another site here, really relate to the pond that is on the northernmost property owned by Burnsville Toyota. This is not part of our subject site, but he had indicated that there have been times when we've had heavy rains where he felt that this pond overflowed and overflowed into South Cross Drive. We have submitted that information to the Public Works Department, and I know that there have been issues at many places throughout the city with these heavy rains that we have been experiencing, but we have forwarded that to the Public Works Department, and they will take a look at that and determine if there are any particular issues that need to be worked on with regard to the engineering. With that, the recommendation from staff is to recommend approval of the applications subject to the conditions that were identified at our last meeting, and those are identified here on the screen. With that, I will stand for questions. And again, Mr. Brown is here this evening, and so is Mr. Lindahl, if you have questions of them.
Commissioners, first questions of staff from our previous meeting. Okay.
I'm sorry. I was looking farther down. Yeah, I was letting him answer. Just a couple quick ones, Deb. Under number four, the condition, I'm sorry, let's go back to number one. Do you know what the standards from MPC are?
Yes. For daylight, I believe it is 65 decibels, and then we have the information. It's different for nighttime, but I would need to look those up particularly.
And then under number four, this has me a little concerned that the applicant is now not able apparently to comply with the conditions of the 2010 PUD. Do we know if, from the 2010 PUD, if this issue had been part of the discussion at that time?
The condition was identified, which is included in your packet at that point in time.
I guess I wasn't being clear. At the time they agreed to the hours, now they are saying they can't because it's outside of their ability to control.
That's correct. The PUD agreement was signed by the applicant, so yep.
So this is new information?
Correct.
To the city, okay. And then on number five, I just had looked back to the approvals, and under 2003, service doors closed after 10:00. But there was really no other, there doesn't seem to be any other hours as part of the different approvals.
That's correct.
In terms of working.
Yep, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, other questions? Commissioner Levy.
Just to clarify, if I may, thank you, Mr. Chair. The hours of delivery for vehicles are not under the applicant's control. They'll come whenever the trucker feels he needs to drop them off. Is that what I understand?
That's what we were advised of, and the applicant can further address that for you.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner has other questions? Commissioner Singh? No, okay. I think to how we'll manage this, I'll ask the applicant to come up, and then I think I'll just kind of tick through these one by one, and we'll discuss them. So if you, if the applicant could come up, please step up to the podium and give us your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Tony Brown, Partner and General Manager, Burnsville Toyota, 14800 Burnhaven Drive in Burnsville.
Mr. Brown, thank you for your time this evening.
You're welcome.
So we'll just kind of, you saw that Ms. Garros had kind of covered these things, so I think we'll just kind of discuss these real quickly, kind of one by one, and then the Commissioners can have questions. The first one is noise from the existing car wash is loud, and adding a second bay will increase noise. What can be done to restrict noise from the car wash blowers?
Well, a couple different things here. I know that there's a warning buzzer. I don't know if I've heard of that mentioned specifically or not, but I've stood back in the park myself to see how loud this was, and I found that very annoying. We've turned that down. In fact, I don't know if it's low enough. I'm probably just going to disconnect the warning buzzer altogether. As far as the blowers themselves, I can lower the garage door on that car wash probably about 18 to 24 inches. Hopefully, that will help trap some of that noise inside the wash. It won't make it go away, but hopefully I can make it a little bit better. I did have the guy from Broadway Car Wash come out with a decibel reader. It wasn't an official government-issue decibel reader, but it was an app on his phone that they've used before in the car wash business. It wasn't his first time having to deal with how much noise does it make. And he had readings of approximately, and this was on our property, from our lot line, which is maybe 50, 60 feet away, maximum decibels with the blower running of 50 to 61, and with the nothing running at all in the car wash of about 46. So my whole goal with that was if I was outside of the boundaries or exceeding any types of limits, I certainly would want to know that. Our goal is not to be obnoxious or anything. I just have a car wash to provide a service for the customers. So I just wanted to know where I was at as far as noise goes. So those are things that I can do to try to make that better. I could even maybe try to shorten the cycle of the blower time. Right now, it's set at about a minute and 20 seconds. I could try to slow that down a little bit, shorten it to maybe a minute 20. People do like to leave with their car reasonably dry, so I don't want to shorten it too much. Then why would I even have one? So those are some things I can do to keep that noise under control.
Thank you. Commissioners, I'll start. I did go Saturday. Saturday, I sat in the housing development in the parking, and the buzzer was the thing that I heard the most. And it was probably the thing that I heard above and beyond anything else was just the buzzer. The blowers, in comparison to the interstate noise, was kind of muffled, but the buzzer thing, I think that would be a positive thing. Commissioners, Commissioner Singh.
Justice for Ms. Garros. Ms. Garros, what is the Minnesota Pollution Control standard? What's the standard, allowable standard?
It would be 65 decibels during the day.
So according to what he's saying, that he's within that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Commissioners, other questions? Number two. Commissioner Levy.
On the addition, assuming this all goes through.
Right.
Would you use the same kind of system, or would you use a system that has quieter blowers so that?
I can investigate an option to see what kind of, if there is a quieter blower available. I did inquire of Broadway Car Wash. I told them about the issue I was having. Again, our goal is not to be an obnoxious neighbor. I like to be as cooperative as I can. He said he would look into maybe a lower horsepower blower to see if that would quiet things down at all, and that's all I can tell you as far as that goes.
Okay.
I know that he did say, excuse me, there are some, if I, there was one lower horsepower one, but it winds up in order to start blowing, and you'd get a real annoying whining noise before it starts. And I thought, that might make things actually worse. So we'll see what he comes up with from there.
Our second discussion point, is it possible to turn the wash base so the blowers face the east towards Burnhaven Drive?
The short answer would be no. Economically and mechanically, with the way that that car wash is set up now, the plumbing, electrical, and everything would have to be ripped out because when I turn that car wash around, now you're not parking over top of a drain anymore. So where's the water going to go? The electrical feed and the plumbing, the water coming in, and where all the equipment is set's got to be moved. So it's really not an option.
Commissioners, other questions? I did also look at that because I knew that was a question, and I would be concerned. The car loading into the car wash backs up now towards Burnhaven, and if you flip it, the car loading would then back up towards the housing development from a standpoint of cars sitting there and idling.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Commissioner Benke.
Yeah, I really didn't see the cars as being a huge impact to that. I also had noticed that the new bay is designed in a mirror image of the existing bay. So to me, flipping them seemed to be reasonable, but the considerations that the applicant just made, you know, trying to turn it around at this point, the existing one, would not be a good situation.
Commissioners, other questions? Number three, the car wash is not limited to only Toyota employees and vehicle owners. A resident stated that they were able to pay cash for a car wash. Mr. Brown?
That would not be an incorrect statement, although the reason it's there is for our service customers. Each time they come through, they get a voucher ticket like that, which is good for 30 days with a code number on it, and you can drive up, punch the code number in, and get a basic car wash. The reason it takes cash or credit is if a customer wants to upgrade to a premium or elite wash with the undercar and the wax and all that stuff. That's the only reason that exists. We don't advertise that wash for public use or, and don't even encourage it, to tell you the truth. That's the only reason it takes cash. Could you drive in from somewhere and pull up there and wash your car? Yeah, I suppose you could, but that's not what it's for, and we don't advertise it as such.
It sounds to me like a software issue. Could it be programmed that the only time cash would be accepted is if the voucher goes in first?
I asked the folks at Broadway of what we could possibly investigate. There might be a way to change it so that the customer, upon receipt of their free voucher, could upgrade it inside the building with our cashier. I don't know if that's possible, but it's another thing he could look at for us if it got to that, at which point I would probably just eliminate the upgrades altogether and just keep it a basic car wash and be done.
Commissioner Benke.
Deb, you know, again, we're looking at just a piece of this. Was there any documentation from the, let's see, would that be the CUP? Yeah, the CUP amendment, was there any documentation from that 2004? Were they expected to police that? I mean, it's just a simple statement. I'm sorry, it's not item five in the CUP. Use of the car wash restricted to individuals. Was there, would there be an expectation that they are required to police that and keep other people out?
I think that was the statement, and that was the condition of that PUD, so.
Okay.
Yep.
Commissioner Singh.
Deb, can you please repeat for us, what was that condition?
The condition, this is the 2004 conditional use permit amendment for the car wash that's there. Item number four, that condition is the car wash shall, oh, I'm sorry. It's actually item number five, use of the car wash shall be restricted to individuals who purchase a vehicle from Burnsville Toyota and its employees.
Okay. Because I was thinking, Mr. Chair, is it a problem if, I have bought a vehicle from the dealership there, what if I'm a member of the community or I live next door and I want to wash, and I just drive in there and pay the cash and have my wash? But according to what you're saying, there's a condition that prohibits that.
Yes.
Commissioners, other questions? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on. Number four, noise from the diesel truck transports occurs late at night while vehicles are being unloaded at the car lot. Diesel engines don't shut down. Mr. Brown, I'll let you address that.
I actually addressed the, one of the drivers from the company that drives those transport trucks last week, and told him about what we have going on here. And I said, if I clear a parking area up towards Burnhaven Drive, can you guys back in and unload up by Burnhaven Drive and then drive out so your headlights aren't pointing at these people and you don't have your motors running and your, I didn't measure it, but it's probably somewhere around 200 yards further away from the development. And he said, well, there's only three of us. That's not a problem. So as of last week, they started backing in and unloading out by Burnhaven Drive, and I've left empty spots there for them to park the cars that they unload. So hopefully, that will be a great help.
No? Commissioners, questions? Okay. Number five, a neighbor indicated that there were deliveries and the maintenance facility is open 24 hours a day. I'll let you address that.
Maintenance facility service hours are from 7:00 to 10:00, Monday through Thursday, 7:00 to 5:00 on Friday, and 9:00 to 5:00 on Saturday. There are people in and out of the building after that, and the lights are on because they clean the building. So a cleaning crew comes in, they start about 10:00. It takes them until roughly 4:00 or 5:00 in the morning to get the building cleaned, but we're not open for business. The front lights are shut off unless they're mopping the floors up there or something. So we're not open for business, but there are people in there. I have a parts man that comes in at 3:00 a.m. to start checking in parts orders and getting orders pulled for the next day's deliveries. But he uses a pencil. He shouldn't make too much noise, I wouldn't think, so.
Questions? Number six, I think Ms. Garros had answered. She provided the CUP and PUD addition conditions. Commissioners, number seven, to what extent the PUD conditions can be changed? I think Deb has discussed that. And then number eight, what are the hours of operation for the car wash and the service center? You mentioned the service center, so what are the hours of operation for the car wash?
Car wash hours are the same as the service center hours. So if we're not open, the car wash is not open. There's a hood that goes over top of the control box, and we even go inside and shut the power off. So it's not open if we're not there.
Commissioners, I would say that I drove by randomly. I live in the neighborhood. I drove by randomly three times when the dealership was closed, and all three times I did see the hood thing over the controls. So, Commissioners, other questions of the applicant?
No, Mr. Chair, if I may. I just want to thank Mr. Brown for the conditions that he has, he intends to put into place. You know, like that door, when the dryer is on, if you lower the door a bit, as you said, about a foot or 18 inches, that would help to mitigate the noise that the machines make. the machines make. And hopefully it will not impact the neighborhood as much. I mean, again, also the diesel truck moving them a few, couple hundred yards, that would also help with the noise situation. And I personally appreciate your making those accommodations to mitigate the noise.
Thank you.
Commissioners, other comments?
And I would also, Mayor Commissioner Singh's comments, I guess I would appreciate the thing you mentioned about the buzzer. As I, as I had said in my opening statement, that was the thing that probably I felt was the most annoying was that when I was parked in, there's a, the neighborhood has a parking space, I think where visitors can park. And I parked there and got out and walked around for a little bit. And that was the thing that I could hear versus anything else was the, when I usually vote or we discuss these things, I always try to think about this from the standpoint of you were my neighbor right next door and how, you know, what I believe to be reasonable and not reasonable. So, and I do appreciate having you address the buzzer.
Thank you.
Commissioners, other questions for the applicant? Thank.
Sorry.
Okay, Commissioner Benke, questions for the applicant?
Editing for a minute and since he's here. I'm, I'm still struggling a little bit with what I, as a, as a planner, consider the awkwardness of the plat change and the method for acquiring the property for the car wash. I had spoken with staff a little bit at the last meeting about, you know, what, what is the rationale? Because within four years, you either have to make it part of the PUD or build a building on it. What's the rationale for six years into a 10-year approval? You just want to go to the expense and the time of borrowing a sliver of land from that parcel, which then encumbers that parcel with, I mean, anything that you build over there is gonna have setbacks from this new line. So it's gonna limit you.
Well, as it stands right now, the car wash line can get to be 17, 18 deep for our, our customers. And the whole idea is with the addition that we've got going on and the additional influx of business that we're gonna have, I think the traffic's gonna be even, even more than it is right now. So if I can just take and get this extra car wash built now, I can accommodate all of my customers and get them through in a timely fashion so they're not sitting there 80, 90 minutes waiting to get a car wash. So that's the only reason, just for a customer service standpoint.
Sure. I guess, I, I, my issue is that at some point, you're gonna bring something, or somebody will bring something for that lot that now has an odd location that has setbacks that'll have to be happened from it. And I, I guess what I keep always looking for is an opportunity to avoid having a parcel come back to us to look for variances and things that are created in a, in a manner like this.
Okay.
And I realize this is a small one. I mean, there have been others that are bigger.
Right.
But it's just, it just feels like an awkward way to manage this and it's got me uncomfortable from that side. I love the fact that you've, you're adding on to the building. I love the fact that you have enough business that you need to do this. I love the fact that you're upgrading the building to match the structure up front. I mean, I think all those are excellent things for Burnsville, as is your business. This one is, this has just got me a little unsettled.
So the concern would be in the future, if I wanted to do something like put another, I don't know, whatever kind of?
If there was a building that went there, all of a sudden.
On the north lot.
On the north lot, on the north lot, because that's still yours. And at some point within the next four years from now.
So if I wanted to build an office building there for all my administrative stuffs or whatever?
Right. Now, I, I suppose, well, and I might be looking at it from the standpoint, if it stays a separate lot, you have other setbacks. If it joins to this one, maybe all that goes away. And maybe at that point, my issue isn't an issue anymore. It's just that currently it exists as two separate parcels. It's not a PUD on this piece. There is a PUD there, you know, it would, it feels to me, from a planning standpoint, it would be nice if that was all cleaned up.
Okay.
And maybe I'm just four years in advance.
Right.
So, thank you.
Commissioner Levy.
I'm still curious as to why, just a little notch, as opposed to taking a straight line across the whole interboundary area. You own the whole thing.
Sir, why don't you step up and give your name and address for the, for the record again and, and answer that question so everybody can hear you.
Good evening again. My name is Darrell Lindahl, the architect. The issue is, is that if you move the setback, by moving the property line all the way along, all the way from the east to the west, that would put the setback for the parking lot into the existing parking. So then you would have to go out and ask for a variance for the additional parking rails take off that whole south row. That's, that's the reason why we've provided just enough to, to accommodate the car wash.
It minimizes loss of parking lot, of parking spaces.
Correct.
Thanks.
Commissioners, other, other questions? Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Brown. I appreciate your time. Commissioners, discussion? No, we, we, I, we opened and closed the public hearing at the first one. We just continued our discussion.
Okay.
I did, I did double check that.
Good. Thank you.
I did my, my research up front. Commissioners, discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioners.
Thank you. Go on record and say, and I don't want anybody to think we're nitpicking this to death, but when the neighbor, neighbors have an issue, I just personally felt an obligation to get this stuff out into the air and that hopefully we can all work together so everybody's happy and you can have a business and then they can have some silence. So I have no issue with what we've discussed today. It seems like the applicant has gone through and made changes to what we've sought out and so I'm comfortable with what we have in front of us right now.
Thank you, Commissioner Workman.
Thank you.
Commissioners, other comments?
One question, Chair.
Commissioner Benke.
Deb.
Deb, you're on.
Yep, just one quick observation here. Under our question number four, I noticed that the scheduled delivery limit was 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. But down below, staff has advised the neighbors, such deliveries are a nuisance under the code if after 10:00. Is there a reason that those two times don't match here?
What we did is just indicated what the nuisance is. So if they're, if they're hearing noise after 10:00 PM, that's a nuisance and they should be calling in to the police.
So this time doesn't refer, this time doesn't refer to the PUD, it refers to the city code?
Correct.
Understood. Thank you.
I mean, it, it applies, I'm sorry, it does apply generally, you know, after, after 10:00 PM. Yep, so to both properties.
Commissioner Singh.
Mr. Chair, I take that statement routinely scheduled deliveries are between 7:00 and AM and 7:00 PM is when normally the deliveries are done. It doesn't mean that's, that's the code. It's being, when the deliveries are done. Deliveries can continue until 10 o'clock and you'll be fine. But this is when the actual deliveries over the years being done. Am I right?
Yes, and when you have, you know, for anyone, unless they had the specific time extended in the PUD or the conditional use permit beyond 10 o'clock, then, then that would be allowed. But in this case, it's not. So any noise after, after 10:00 just falls under that general nuisance.
Commissioners, any final questions? Would, I would stand for a motion.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I move that the Planning Commission recommended the City Council approval of the rezoning PUD amendment, preliminary and final plat to be known as Burnhaven, third edition and CUP amendment to allow more than 10% of the east front facade of the service building to be metal panels subject to the following conditions. The sixth condition is presented by staff.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Workman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. And we had one abstention.
Everyone's here.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. And the motion carries. Thank you for coming in this evening, Mr. Brown, and this will go to the City Council on Tuesday, October 4th, unless that date is incorrect.
Correct, October 4th.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time. Next item on our agenda is also a public hearing. Ambro and Sons LLP application for a PUD amendment to modify the storage material height and timelines for building construction and continue the interim outdoor storage use for Lot 2 Block 1 Patricia Park. That was much shorter than the last one, Ms. Garros. I think that first one was a test. You have the floor.
Thank you. For the application, the subject site that we are looking at is one of six properties that are owned by the applicant. And Waste Management is the company name that they operate under, but the ownership is Ambro and Sons. So the, that's why we're looking at the application for Ambro and Sons LLP. The subject site is the 10-acre piece that is closest to the railroad corridor. It's north of South Cross Drive West. And the aerial photo here shows what piece we are looking at. The entire property holdings that the applicant has are about 30 acres of land. We're looking at just the 10-acre piece identified on this map as number one. That is the subject site. The subject site has gone through a number of iterations over the years and various land uses and owners, which is outlined in the staff report. The PUD approval that was initially on it was done at a time when this piece, number one, was under the same ownership as the piece currently owned by Waste Management to the east. They received planned unit development approval initially before this property was platted into two separate lots. And that PUD approval was to allow Waste Management to expand their building and to have additional outdoor storage on that particular site. Later on, and later on, the property was subdivided. The ownership is different now for Lot 1 and the Waste Management parcel. And the subject site was replatted into Lot 1 Block 1 of Patricia Park in the 1990s. The PUD amendment that is requested is to allow the unpaved or gravel outdoor storage use on parcel number one to continue to operate and then also to remove the, the condition that a building has to be built on the lot by November 1st of 2016. The rest of the properties owned by the applicant, 2, 3, 4, 5 and 6, are properties that are part of the Waste Management operation. Waste Management has operated in the city since, yes?
Ames, not Waste Management.
I'm sorry, thank you. Ames, looking at it and seeing it. But they have operated here since the 1950s and they are operating under legal nonconforming use standards, meaning that the operation for the majority of that property, for 20 of the 30 acres, existed and has been operating since before the city was incorporated and our current zoning ordinances came into effect. So they can continue to operate those. The city doesn't have any PUD or other approval over those sites. We are only talking about this one piece that's furthest to the west. The reason that this is before you this evening is because in 2011, the applicant came in and requested a PUD amendment for the subject site, which is parcel one. And they requested that the outdoor storage area be expanded to include the entire 10 acres. Prior to that, they were granted approval to store materials on the northern half of the site, but not the entire site. The situation is that the PUD was granted for them to use an unpaved gravel parking area as opposed to paved parking area. Most of the applications that come before Planning Commission and Council, indeed most of the applications for exterior storage, you do have to have a hard surface on the parking area. In this case and in a few other cases within the city, the council has allowed the operation of the outdoor storage area to be on gravel or an alternative surface because the equipment being used, the storage materials and/or the storage materials, just in the operation of those would rip up the blacktop. So they're allowed to operate in, in a gravel situation. The requirements today are that if you want to have outdoor storage, you need to have a principal building on the lot. That's why the 2010, or excuse me, the 2011 approval had that condition that either the site needs to have a building constructed or it needs to have a, the gravel basically replaced with a permanent type of material. So we're looking at that expiring as of November 1st. What the applicant would like to do is to allow that outdoor storage area to continue to operate as it has since basically the 2011 PUD approval. They do not have any plans to construct another building at any time in the foreseeable future. As I said, they have operated here in the city for, since at least the 1950s and they want to continue to be able to operate not only their other properties, but this property as well as they have in the past. The other reason that I show this particular graphic is because we've got really a block area that is south of Ames Drive, east of the, actually Judicial Road, which is partially shown, whoops, partially shown here at the very top and runs down. We've got the railroad corridor and this corridor is not abandoned. The Canadian Pacific Railroad can start using that at any point in time that they want to. It's not an abandoned corridor. Then South Cross Drive to the south and County Road 5 to the east. This is all an industrial zoned area and it's identified in the comprehensive plan for long-term industrial and by the zoning ordinance. The Waste Management site operates under a PUD. It doesn't have any specific deadlines. The outdoor storage site has been paved and they are allowed to continue to use that for outdoor storage. They do use it currently for their trucks and there is a natural gas service area that's been added in the past few years. So we have this existing condition out there that's not anticipated to change from a long use or land use perspective for the long term. In terms of the PUD benefits and deviations, they are the same as they have been in the past for previous applications for this site, with the exception that today in renewing or changing the planned unit development, we need to include a deviation that they are asking for this site to continue with the unpaved gravel storage area without a building permit on the lot. The buildings that have been constructed within this general area and also on the west side of the railroad tracks, this is Burnsville Lumber, these buildings have primarily been constructed in the 60s and 70s. There is one site that Ames Construction owns, which is this site in through here that has a more recent building, I believe the 1998 or so. And that site, they have put in the parking, paved parking, and that site does conform to the current ordinance. But all of the outdoor storage that's done on those properties is legal nonconforming. Something that the city has done in situations such as this, where we have a long-term operator such as Excel down on Black Dog Road, the city also did something similar for the YRC NUS trucking application, is instead of putting deadline dates for the application to end, they put in events. And that is something that we have discussed with the city attorney and from a staff perspective, feel that that may be appropriate to use that same type of a PUD conditions as well for this site. And I'll talk about the events that we are looking at. What the applicant would like to do is again, continue the outdoor storage over Lot or parcel one. They don't anticipate building a building at any point in time. And they also And they also are requesting, as long as they are going through this, the entire site on the south of this parcel one is screened by two rows of evergreen trees, approximately 18 to 26 feet tall. So they've been well-established for a number of years. The rest of the property also is bounded on all sides by mature evergreen trees. So it is screened from the adjacent properties. The property to the west is industrial zoned property. We've got two newer buildings here. However, the railroad bed is raised, so there is a degree of screening that takes place because of the change in topography. And there's also been trees that established themselves over the years to deal with screening in this location. What staff is suggesting for planning commission and council is to do something similar that we've done with the Memorandums of Understanding for Excel and YRC NUS, and to establish conditions under which this Lot 1 will need to be brought into compliance with the current ordinance. And that means the lot paved or building basically constructed on the lot. Instead of putting a deadline date where the applicant has to continue coming in and updating and updating and updating their planned unit development, what would occur instead is that we would identify a number of terms, which are outlined on the third page of your report as items A through F. And that would be to allow the gravel outdoor storage to operate there until such a time as either the current owner ceases that outdoor storage operation, or until they would apply for a PUD amendment and get approval for a different use of the site, or until such a time as a permanent building is constructed on the site, or until such a time as the subject site is combined, divided, replatted with the other properties, until the current owner ceases to own the property. So if they sell, it would need to be brought back into compliance. And then F, until such a time as the materials stored on the site are proposed to be changed. So what that would mean is that this use could be allowed to continue until those events come into play. In exchange for changing the time deadline to an event deadline, there are some additional items that staff is recommending or additional parameters to the PUD. And those would be that the interim gravel outdoor storage use shall not be transferable, so it can't be sold to another party. And then the next item is item H, that within 30 days that that interim outdoor storage use ceases, that the site would need to be decompacted and revegetated. We had indicated in the staff report that that be returned to green space, and I just wanted to make that note for planning commission. Just to be clear, the site is to be vegetated, not changed to a green space land use. So we're proposing that it needs to be vegetated. That the six properties, at such time as they need to come in for another land use clearance, this is the standard policy of the city, for the six properties, they would need to be platted and development fees paid at that point in time. They are proposing to allow a higher screening height, and again, this just applies to parcel one, to allow that screening height instead of 10 feet, which it is currently limited to, to allow that to be 16 feet taller. And again, the existing trees, as I indicated, range from 18 to about 26 feet for the majority of the property. And then as long as the interim gravel outdoor storage use continues, the applicant would provide annual reports of what the properties are being used for and what they anticipate. This is very similar to the reviews that we do with the landfill. They provide us updates periodically just on the use, so we can monitor about how long they anticipate the use will be there and look at redevelopment options. Something that is also, I believe, done with the Kramer Mining Site as well. With that, we have already discussed, the site is screened from the adjacent property. Something that's important to note is that the property to the south is a townhome development, and they are actually situated higher. There is quite a hill, so a lot of those units actually do look over and can see some of this site. This area was platted in 1992 as Southcross Village Second Edition, so it was something that was done after, at least Ames Construction has been using the five sites. This site came into use for the applicant in 2004 or after that. I just have, if the commission wants to look into, I do have the conditions of approval from the 2011 approval. And if there are questions that you have regarding that, we can bring this slide back up. I just actually thought of doing that today, so added that here if we need to take a look at it. What I also wanted to note for commissioners and for the public is that the site at its closest point to a residential structure on the southwest corner is about 220 feet. When you go directly across to the closest townhome, that's about 178, 179 feet proximity there. But again, this area is situated at a higher elevation than the area that's used for outdoor In terms of the information provided by the applicant, if you look actually to the left is actually north, and they're looking at, they did provide an elevation showing that the existing tree cover is actually above the 16-foot. They're proposing 16 feet as far as the maximum height for materials to be stored only on this piece. And then the existing trees are at least 18 feet, and we are recommending that they have to maintain at least 18 feet height in screening for this area. The recommendation from staff is to consider approval of the PUD amendment, and this is for the interim gravel outdoor storage use, subject to the following conditions. All applicable conditions of previous PUD and CUP approvals remain in full force and effect. And then in addition to that, this is where it's structured a little bit differently than typical. We have item two, the interim gravel outdoor storage use on the subject site, which is the lot right next to the railroad tracks, may continue until one of the following occur. And these are the items that I just had briefly gone over. And then item three, the interim gravel outdoor storage use is not transferable. And then within 30 days of the date that the outdoor storage operation ceases, it needs to be decompacted. And I wanted to note again for planning commission, instead of stating return to green space, to say decompacted and landscaped with native plants and grasses. Just so there's no question in however many years, if the applicant changes and if staff changes, everybody understands what that is. And then the six properties should be combined and platted at the time of a future land use clearance. Subject sites posted for one-way access and loading. They do currently do that. We're just identifying that for the record for the PUD, but they do currently do that. Screening height should be maintained at a height of 18 feet or taller. And then as long as the interim gravel outdoor storage use continues, property owner should provide written updates to the city as to the property use, just for planning purposes and to update, provide updated information on the life of that site. With that, I can stand for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Garros. Commissioners, questions for staff? Commissioner Levy?
Mr. Chair. What is stored in this facility?
We did list that in the report. Depending on the area of the site that you're looking at, approvals for outdoor storage included, like the Waste Management site that we discussed, they can have refuse trucks, 20 to 25 dumpsters, also toilets. And that site, again, does not have any particular conditions when the date that that needs to cease. As far as the subject site on parcel one, the materials stored on that...
Commissioner Levy, we could certainly ask the applicant of that when they come up, to hear from the applicant instead of an assumption.
It is specified in the report. I just need to find where it is.
Top of the third page, I think.
Thank you. Concrete barriers, steel beams, wood, other metal bridge, and construction equipment is allowed to be stored there.
So it's not a groundwater issue with those things?
No.
Okay.
No.
In number five, you mentioned six properties should be combined and planted as part of any future use. They're separately platted now?
Some are platted, some are not. The majority of them are not. So yes, and that is something typical that we would have when you need to come in for a conditional use permit or a land use clearance, that at that point in time, we look at plating. So that would be what is recommended.
So all 1 through 6 would be combined into one?
Yep, either one, or they could divide it, subdivide it, but it all would be formally platted.
Okay, that was what I was trying to get at. Thank you.
Commissioner Benke?
Thank you, Chair. Yep, can you just, is that, that's not a recommendation that will be as part of our current, that's not part of your current recommendations, though. It says as part of any future land clearance application. So it's not part of this one as a recommendation?
Correct.
Good, okay.
I'm going to continue. Absolutely. Commissioner Benke, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. I was questioning the 16-foot height, and I do see it up on top of page three also. That is part of a previous PUD approval?
The previous PUD approval allowed up to 10 feet.
Okay, so we are changing that?
This would be a request to expand that to 16.
But that's not listed in the recommendations.
18 feet is...
No, the screening height maintained 18 feet. That's okay, we can add it.
Your request is for 16.
That's fine, okay. And one of our elements here is item 2F, until such time as materials to be stored on the subject site are changed. So that's basically anything different than what we saw at the top of page three?
Correct.
Okay. Under number three, interim gravel outdoor storage should not be transferable. You talked about sale, but what about leasing or renting?
I believe that's covered in terms of the, if the owner either ceases to operate or...
Okay, we're good. And I guess under number six, since they're doing such a good job with the one-way, have there been complaints about backups and trucks and things?
I did take a look at all six parcels, and we did receive a complaint in February of this year, but that was a crane that was left up so they could see, they could see the crane. And we notified the applicant, and it was down within 24 hours.
Okay. And then I'm just curious too, since the townhome project went in in 1992, and clearly this has been there, do we know if there was any comment in regards to these other approvals as we've come along from them, from the townhome project?
Yeah, for, at least, I had worked on, I believe, the 2010 project. And at that point in time, I believe we had one or two individuals that were concerned about noise. What they did as part of that approval, though, is at that point in time, a condition or conditions were added that the property be posted with a contact owner for the applicant, and also that they were granted approval through that PUD to allow them to operate overnight, up to 30 calendar days per year, provided they inform staff, which is our city engineer, of what those dates are, and that it's, that the site remains posted. So if we receive any calls, we can let them know, yes, this is planned, or no, this is not.
Thank you.
And that was, that was with, for the property, the first site, when that was done. I think that was added.
Yes, those were added, correct. That was added with this PUD amendment.
And that was, if I remember correctly, that was kind of a negotiation at the time. A number of times, they needed to operate overnight, and they wouldn't be operating overnight every night.
Yes, correct.
Mr. Chair, I did think of one more thing.
Commissioner Benke?
Thank you. So the separate building requirement, which we were being asked to remove, is really only there because these all exist as separate parcels?
Correct.
Thank you.
Commissioners, other questions?
Mr. Chair, I have a quick question.
Commissioner Workman.
Deb, at some point, the fire marshal would have to take a look at the gravel roads and sign off on that. Is that still consistent today within the property?
Actually, for that, I believe that was all done through the city engineer's office, but we do have development review that includes our fire department, and they did not have any comments or changes that they recommended as part of the project. Most of the materials that are stored on this site are, like we say, they're cement barriers and those types of things, not combustible type materials for the most part. Heavy metal, cement, those types of things.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, other questions? Deb, and it was noted in our background, as I drove around and looked, the only, they've done an amazing job, and to be upfront, I live near this development, so... But once again, I specifically went and looked and thought, and they've done an amazing job with screening the property. But they did address, there's one section where some of the evergreens have not done well. And per the background, they're in the process of augmenting that. And that just seems like an odd space where a few, few trees have not, have not done well.
Exactly. I believe those have been replaced.
A good job of screening. The majority of this, as you drive down Southcross, you can't see into the property at all.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Benke?
I was going to save that for after, but absolutely right. I mean, I've driven past, I mean, we all know, I've been around a long time. I've driven by this thing for decades and had no idea that was all there.
Do you remember when City Hall was there?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I rest my case. Commissioners, other questions? Okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant? Otherwise, I'll move to the public hearing, but no questions. This is the public hearing, and at this point, I would open the public hearing and ask anyone in the audience that would like to step up to the podium and give us your thoughts. I would welcome them to the podium and give us their thoughts. Seeing that no one is rushing to the podium, and no one seems to be rushing from the hallway, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, your thoughts? Don't all talk at once. Commissioner Benke?
I would move, I would make a motion that planning commission recommend a city council approval of the PUD amendment for interim outdoor storage, subject to the following eight recommendations. However, I would like to add a ninth, and I will let staff put it in the proper location, specifying the mentioned 16-foot tall material storage increase from the 10-foot currently allowed.
And then there was the slight change, Commissioner Benke, to the, to number four, where you eliminated return to green space that's in our background but not.
Correct.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Oh, actually, Deb... Can I ask one question here too? Because I did have this underlined as well. Return to green space, so that would be an indication that the developer, that the landowner wanted to leave that area fall out. In other words, no, no other work in there.
We did not have, there was actually nothing in any of the previous PUDs about this. So what we did is added, and the idea was that it be, the gravel be removed and then it be reseated.
Right.
I had put in green space, but the applicant identified that, and if, we didn't mean that this site has to be green spaced, the land used, so just wanted to clarify that.
But that's to cover us in case there isn't an application for something else, and the property is simply being cleaned off for a while.
Exactly.
Okay. I have, I realize I should have mentioned this before. 30 days from the date of operation cease, what happens if that's in the middle of winter?
We have standard language in the zoning ordinance that allows us to deal with planting materials during the winter months, so that would be put off until the beginning of spring, which is, I believe, June.
Next planting season?
Yes.
Okay, so it's covered elsewhere?
Yes.
Don't want to change that, though, thank you.
Commissioner Benke, why don't you start over?
I will.
Because you kind of doubled the clocks there and start from the beginning.
Yep, I will. I would recommend, planning commission recommend a city council approval of the PUD amendment for the interim outdoor storage, subject to the six, to the eight recommendations, as well as the ninth, confirming the increase to the 16-foot height from the currently allowed 10-foot.
We have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Walter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post nay, and the motion carries. This will also go to the city council. This will also go to the city council on Tuesday, October 4th. Thank you for coming in. We also appreciate everything that Ames does for the community. Thank you very much.
We greatly appreciate your time.
Thank you. The next item, sorry, the next item on our agenda is also a public hearing. First industrial LP application for a conditional use permit amendment to expand the retail sales area for Shop Jimmy located at 2300 West Highway 13. Ms. Dean, you are presenting this evening, and once again, thanks for a very short explanation.
Thank you.
You have the floor.
Thank you, Chair, members of the commission. This is a conditional use permit request. Some of you may remember back in 2015, there was a request for Shop Jimmy, their subsidiary, Minnesota Home Outlet, to occupy space in an office warehouse building north of Highway 13, just adjacent to the Menards Building, and south of Cliff Road West, although you can't really see it from the site, and west of Oliver Avenue. So the applicant is proposing to occupy more of the building than what was approved in, in 2015, and that's why they're here, or we're here before you tonight. The particular site is zoned gateway industrial heavy. The surrounding sites are also gateway industrial heavy to the north, and, I'm sorry, to the east, portion to the northwest, north is zoned I-2 PUD, and adjacent to the west is gateway industrial heavy PUD. That's the Menards Building I referred to. This gives you an aerial overview perspective of the site. It is adjacent to a frontage road off of that Highway 13. So before you, is the, the floor plan, which shows the, the request for the retail space. The overall building's approximately 400,000 square feet. Shop Jimmy occupies over 200,000 square feet of the building, primarily for office warehouse with a portion of the property or portion of the floor space, about 12,000 square feet that was approved for retail use, again, back in 2015. They're asking for an overall expansion up to 20% of the space that they occupy, which ultimately would get to approximately 56,000, approximately 56,000 square feet of the space. Other tenants within the building are of office warehouse capacity. We do have a provision in the city code that talks about retail use within an office warehouse building within our industrial zoning districts can occupy up to 1,000 square feet, or there's a 20%, basically, they're, they're limited to 1,000 square feet if you really look at it, for buildings of larger size. So when they came in in 2015, they asked for the 12,000 square feet. There's the cap at 20,000 square feet, ultimately with the conditional use permit approval. And that would be their ultimate build-out plan. Should they request any more in the future, that would be a, either conditional use permit amendment or a planned unit development altogether for the site. The applicant is not proposing any changes to their existing parking. Staff and the applicant felt, feel that there's adequate parking on-site as, as is based off of the hours of operation of the facility and the complimentary uses within the building. They do, however, provide a proof of parking plan should things change in the future. They're showing basically two options where 64 spaces could be added, either to the, would be to the north of the building or to the south of the building. Staff does recommend that at this time, should, or, I'm sorry, at the time, proof of parking may be needed, that landscaping is included, stormwater requirements, curb and gutter are all implemented at that time, again, if needed. This is in the drinking water overlay, that's something we would evaluate, stormwater and drinking water regulations at that time, should, again, should it be needed. So I'm kind of repeating myself. The staff does recommend approval of the conditional use permit, again, in excess of 1,000 square feet, which would be approximately 57, actually, it would be 57,828 square feet would be the limit, according to our condition number one. Condition number two would be that proof of parking, if needed, would, at time that it is needed, would need to meet specific standards, including curb and gutter, landscaping and stormwater requirements. Certainly, if there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer those. I'm not sure if we have applicant representative. We do have an applicant representative here to answer further questions about the business or operations.
Thank you, Ms. Dean.
Thank you.
Commissioners, questions for staff? Commissioner Benke.
Clarification. So...
That's weird.
So the, the 20%, so it's 1,000 feet or 20%?
Correct.
But you said the thousand, it's really 1,000 feet, but this is 20% of this entire building, which is a very, very large building.
So, if I can answer, sorry, I should have asked first.
I stopped.
Okay. So a business is allowed up to either 20% of the building, and basically, they're capped at, at 1,000 square feet.
Okay.
Anything over 1,000 square feet triggers a need to request a conditional use permit for further review. And, and so they did that in 2015. They were at the 12,000 square feet. We do say that basically, a business is allowed up to the 20%. And so 20% would be 20% of their, their business space that they occupy, which is that 57, approximately 57,000 square feet.
Thank you, second clarification. For the proof of parking, what is the trigger for that?
Basically, if we get complaints, if there, if customers or employees are parking off-site, let's say, into the Menards property I'm walking over, or the property from the east I'm walking over, people are spilling out into the public road, parking on that. At that point, we would, as a staff, say to the applicant, you need to obtain your proof of parking.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to, I have a question in reference to that. We've got a lot of applications that have come in front of us where we've had cross-parking arrangements. I think we did it at Porter Creek, I think, with the library, and we did some stuff there. The applicant could, at that point, come up with a cross-parking agreement with Jen's Ryan, because there's acres of empty parking, and would not trigger this, correct?
They could enter into a joint parking agreement with...
Two private individuals could enter into that and not trigger this?
That's correct.
Correct, okay, I just wanted to clarify that. Commissioners, other questions? Commissioners, was there a need to speak with the applicant?
Not for me.
Okay. At this, this does require a public hearing, so at this point, I will open the public hearing and invite anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this item to step up to the podium and give us your thoughts. Once again, as in the past, not seeing anyone rushing to the podium. I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, your pleasure.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Benke.
Let me make a motion, Planning Commission recommend a city council approval of the CUP to allow retail sales in excess of 1,000 square feet at 2300 West Highway 13 with the following two conditions as listed.
Is there a motion on the floor? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner, seeing all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay, and the motion carries. Once again, sir, this will be in front of the city council on October 4th. Thank you. This brings us to the last item on our agenda this evening, sorry. Public hearing, Lakeland Investments LLC for a PUD amendment to delete building removal timelines and allow businesses other than a coffee shop to operate out of the small building at 12735 County Road 5. We've done a shuffle, and now Ms. Garros is back in charge.
We're back.
Thank you, Ms. Garros, you have the floor.
Thank you. The subject site is located southeast of County Road 5 and Highway 13, that interchange project that was done a couple of years ago. The property currently has a, an office building on the site. And then in 2004, a PUD approval was granted for a second, smaller, little over 400-square-foot coffee shop building. And so that planned unit development is what is being requested for amendment this evening. The applicant would like to use that coffee shop for other uses than the PUD approval allow. In 2004, when this first became, or this came before the city, the owner of the site that wanted to do the operation owned a franchise, and it was known as Fox Hollow Coffee, and that was the, kind of the very beginning of these smaller drive-through coffee shops. And this was one of the first ones that was going to be constructed within the Twin Cities area. With that, they had identified that the subject site, the building, is franchise architecture solely for Fox Hollow Coffee, and the operation was specifically identified. The PUD allowed more than one building on the property. And then, in addition to that, in the PUD agreement, because this was such a new concept and had not been, there's not been a lot of other ones in the metropolitan area, the council added a condition that within 30 days of a business ceasing operation, that they would need to remove the building. Some of the background on that are that, again, this is a new, new concept, and there were questions from the beginning as to how successful this may or may not be at the subject site. I'm going to go on to the next use here. The property at the time in 2004 did have an access off of County Road 5. This would be County Road 5. And there was a shared access between the subject site, which is this north piece, and then the daycare, which is to the south. This property and the property to the south were platted at the same time in our two separate lots. When the interchange project was done for County Road 5 and Highway 13, this access on County Road 5 was closed. So there's no longer any access to the site from County Road 5. The whole intent of the operation was for drive-through coffee so that you really wouldn't have a need for people being in the building. There is a drive-up window, or a walk-up window where people can walk up for coffee. And there are also the two drive-throughs on both sides of the building, which allowed for people to drive through and get their coffee. At the time that this was approved, there were some issues that council considered. And what the applicant had identified for them is that really, this whole concept came from the West Coast, which is pretty typical of coffee operations. They kind of started with the old Photomat booths. Not all of us in here may remember those, but some of us do. But a lot of the Photomat-type booths and some fast food restaurants were used initially in the concepts out on the West Coast. What they did for Fox Hollow Coffee, what they were bringing to the market, is miniature espresso restaurant. And their site really did not involve any indoor seating, and it was more of a service-type franchise facility. Small building, the types of things that council considered were that this was, in addition, another business that could potentially operate at the site. It was kind of ancillary, although it's a second building on the property. The building is so small that they felt that there would be an opportunity for coffee shop use. Let's allow it, hopefully, things will work out. If not, they did put in a specific condition that it be removed upon 30 days of the business closing on the site. So that is what occurred in 2004. Over the years, there have been several operators that have tried to have coffee shops in there, and none of them have been successful. The property was sold, the slot was sold, I believe, in 2014, and a new owner came on, onboard for the entire property. And what they would like to do is, they would like to be able to use this building for other uses other than coffee shop. We did identify for them that they would need to come in and amend the PUD, and that there was this condition that it be removed, you know, when businesses ceased to operate out of there. So we had identified that this was, you know, kind of a tenuous type of application. We also explained to the applicant that for any other uses, because this is a planned unit development, they need to provide information specific to the uses. Planned unit development is a separate zone, if you will. It is something that is comprised of not only what's written in the PUD contract or agreement, but also maps, floor plans, operations, information about number of employees, all of those types of things make up a planned unit development. We had indicated to the applicant that there may be an opportunity for some other types of uses, that this is a unique situation. Typically, we would not, staff recommend, just a number of uses to be allowed in a building without having those floor plans and operational information and plans. But in trying to work with the applicant for, you know, to maximize the potential for this, we did feel that other types of uses may be able to operate out there, provided they operate under the same types of conditions or are similar types of uses as this coffee shop, meaning they are service-oriented type uses as opposed to retail uses. And also that the impacts in terms of traffic and circulation be comparable to a coffee shop type use. With this building, it was specifically approved in the PUD to have no outdoor storage. The trash area is to be inside the building, so there's no outdoor ability for trash enclosure, et cetera. And the use is really limited to only a couple of employees and parking on the property. The applicant submitted a narrative, which was attached to your application, identifying a number of uses that they would like to be considered at the site. And these proposed uses, these are what is on that narrative. In taking a look at these with our other staff, our city attorney, we took a look at this, and we do have some concerns over the uses that are more retail in nature, over service-type businesses, and primarily, the things that come into play when you're looking at retail, there are different parking ratios that apply to retail. There is an intensification of the use when you have products that you're actually manufacturing and selling or doing retail service on. And there are also usually higher numbers of employees, et cetera. So from a staff standpoint, our recommendation is that the site, that the PUD amendment be approved for some of the uses that are requested, but not all of them. Another request of the applicant was that that 30-day deadline for removing the building, should it become vacant for that period of time, that that be removed from the PUD. From a staff perspective, we do not recommend that. We could see expanding that timeframe to a six-month period to give a little bit more time, but we do not believe that that should be deleted altogether. Just with your background materials, we did provide the information on the exterior materials, et cetera. They are not proposing any changes to the materials, to any type of parking arrangement or use arrangement, no changes in lighting, et cetera. They want to use the building in sight as is, with the exception of signage. And that would be where the existing signs that are on site associated with the coffee shop would basically be refaced for whatever new business were to come in for that. With that, in terms of the staff recommendation, staff feels more comfortable, if the planning commission and council choose to do so, of recommending approval of some uses that are non-retail, and also where city licenses are not required. We have a concern, and this is also conveyed by the city attorney. If you loosen up a planned unit development, you may have unintended consequences of other types of use locating in there. The city has to be careful that we don't discriminate against business, business for business. So that's why, rather than just saying, yes, all of the uses in the B1 and B2 zone could be located here, from a staff perspective, we would recommend only those that are listed, not be the coffee shop. The applicant does have a potential tenant to do phone repair, smartphone repair... The applicant does have a potential tenant to do phone repair, smartphone repair, digital, basically, devices where you would drive through, hand in your device. They would give you another device to use in the, you know, half hour, forty minutes or so that it takes to, for them to repair it. And then, once that's done, you would come back and get your own, your own device back. So they do have a potential tenant that is interested in doing this business. If they need additional space for storage of materials or whatnot, there is an opportunity to store or to lease additional office space or space within the office building. So with that, the recommendation is to allow the uses that are indicated subject to a number of conditions. And that's the conditions of previously approved PUDs and CUPs remain in full force and effect. Item A are the uses that staff would suggest appear to be reasonable types of uses. That the number of employees be limited to five or few individuals. That is actually something that the applicant identified would be their maximum number of employees. Hours of operation limited from 5:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Again, working within those parameters of both the coffee shop use being open before typical office hours, and then also allowing for these other potential uses. There would be a condition that the trip generation for any of the uses suggested would not exceed that of the coffee shop use. Site parking green space would not be reduced beyond the current level. Building permit or landscape would not be reduced below the current level. There'd be no exterior display or storage, no indoor seating. And a separate sign permit would be needed for replacing the signage on the existing signs that are located on site. And then, we do suggest maintaining that condition for removal of the building. But the staff feels comfortable with extending that from a thirty-day to a six-month period to allow a little bit more time to be able to market the building for use for the applicant. With that, the applicant is here and can address the commission on any questions that you have. And I can stand for questions as well.
Thank you, Ms. Garros. I appreciate your, your time. Commissioners, questions for staff? Commissioner Levy.
You mentioned green space in number ten. We talked about green space with an earlier application. Do you want to use the term "green space"?
Yes, in this application, we do. The 2004 approval, one of the benefits was that they increased the amount of green space up to thirteen percent. So we want to be able to maintain that and not have, you know, one of these uses need to modify or decrease that green space. If they do, they would need to come in and apply for a PUD amendment.
Thank you.
Commissioners, other questions? Commissioner Benke.
You just know me. Deb, I, to carry Commissioner Levy's comment a little farther. If the building was removed and the travel areas of the building were removed, the site green space would increase considerably?
Yes.
Okay.
That's correct.
But we're only going to keep it to the thirteen? So they could add more parking or something if they chose to do something else in there?
Correct.
Okay. From the original, the original PUD, I mean, you did go back and research it. Was, was that all just written, or was it taped? Or did you see the meeting itself, or not?
They were not taped at that point in 2004, but we do have the case files, the planning reports, all of the documentation for planning commission and council reports.
I mean, it was pretty adamant that it was coffee-only?
Yes, correct. It was specifically identified as coffee-only.
I remember discussion, believe it or not. It was pretty lively.
Yeah, I remember too. It's been, yeah. And your last sentence on the second page, basically, the applicant is saying they didn't know about this, even though the PUD documents are recorded with the land.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Commissioners, Commissioner Singh.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Deb, one, just for clarification. This is not like a drive-through operation?
Yes, it is.
It's a drive-through?
Yes.
Logistically, I don't know how this is going to operate. If you have some of those things that you're going to sell, whether it's ice cream, bakery goods, et cetera, I don't know how you're going to, if I'm driving through, unless I, they have a list and, listed, what is listed, how am I going to order? How do I know what's in there?
They do have menu boards that are out there, listing what's available. They, for the coffee shop, they sold coffee, teas, smoothies. I think they had some pre, like baked goods that they, they had available. So soft drinks, I believe, so.
So that's not new?
Correct.
I want to, just for clarification, condition eight. There shall be no indoor, indoor, should we say, should we say, say, customer seating? Or seating for customers? Employees need to sit down someplace?
Actually, because it's such a small building, there's not really room for that. And the, the current, you know, the current operation didn't have sit-down seating, so we're just recommending that that continue.
Are we, are we, are we, um, having problems with labor law? Employees who work even for three hours, you must sit down.
We're talking about customer seating?
No, that's what I'm saying. Let's say no customer seating, so that the employees can sit down. Just to make it clear.
We can certainly do that.
Thank you, Commissioner Singh. That was a good catch.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioners, other questions? Commissioner Workman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Deb, do we have any other, was this a PUD? Do we have anything else like this on the books where it says if you don't succeed, you will tear down the building?
Yes, I do believe we do. In this case, it was set up because the building was so small. It was just an initial concept. And the city council and staff were really unsure of the reuse potential, et cetera. That's why they had the removal condition. So we do have that under certain planned unit developments.
Okay. Just personally.
We don't have another site that I'm aware of that has a four-hundred-square-foot building. One a little bit bigger, down on Highway thirteen.
The last one we did was RDO. As a condition, once they stop operating the building, it has to come down.
Yes.
And I believe we also did that, help me, Commissioner Singh, did we not do that for NUS?
Yes, we did.
Yes. So I think we've got some other examples in the MRQ.
Commissioner Workman also, you could move it, you wouldn't have to tear it down.
Correct. Just remove it from the.
From the location, yeah.
Could be a granny pod showroom. I pers, well, I'll save my statement for the end, but that was my main question for staff.
Commissioners, other questions? Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant? Then I will proceed to the public hearing. This is a public hearing, and I will open the public hearing at this time and ask if anyone in the audience would like to speak to this item, to please step up to the podium and, and give us your name. Please step up to the podium and give us your name and address. And Ms. Garros, he needs to sign in?
Yes.
I did already.
He did. Perfect. Thank you.
So I'm Vince Hunt, and this is Jay Goodmanson, my business partner.
And your address, please.
And our address is the subject property. I'm the co-owner. But I wanted to get an opportunity to talk, I mean, to not be able to talk about this beautiful building that's a landmark and explain why we listed these different uses. The only reason why we described these different uses is that we were told that we couldn't just say we would like to revert it back to whatever reasonable B3 zoning would allow. And so then, we had to pick what were reasonable within the list through the mainly B2 zoning, okay? That's why. And the property does have a walk-up counter that's nice. It's a very well-built property. It was built to code. It's beautiful. It's actually a landmark. People know, you know, hey, do you know where the double-drive-through coffee shop is on Five? Oh, yeah, that's so cute. I love that building. And I personally worked there for over a year to try and get a go of it. And it, it just won't go because of the access that was taken away and because, at that time, there was a huge mound of dirt that they dug, and they dug thirteen under. So, you know, for us as landlords to try and lease a property where every time it changes, we have to spend seventeen fifty, okay? So it was seven hundred and fifty dollars plus a thousand-dollar deposit. And then, we have to go before the committee, which is, you know, I appreciate all your commissioners' time. You know, I understand, we want to be, you know, we're, we all work and live in this area, okay? But it's unrealistic to say, well, okay, you can lease this space, and you have to find a tenant, and they have to agree that they want to rent to it. And then, you have to submit to the planning commission to see if that particular use would work, okay? And then, they have to wait sixty days for the decision. Is, to me, I just think it's, it's very difficult. So I hope you understand, our side is that to, we're not saying let's just do anything. And it wasn't like I just chose everything. I weeded out ones that I felt were not appropriate or wouldn't work for the space. So that, that's just my two cents that I want you guys to consider.
Can I clarify? The, the, the list that we have in front of us is much broader than just coffee. And to your point, if I'm clarifying what you're saying, this list, you believe, is not workable, or?
No, what I, what I'm saying is that I, I was confined to the list that's already approved, that you guys have previously approved, primarily B2, okay? And I weeded out all the reasonable ones and felt that these were reasonable. And then, to further curtail it is, I mean, I understand, like, I suppose we could live with it. But for example, the current tenant that we, that wants to move in as soon as possible is this cellphone and iPad repair place. And we put sales as well, because I'm assuming that perhaps they would want to sell some cellphones. And I don't think that that would be, by any means, a ton of traffic. So that's an example. But I thought, okay, well, a florist might work, et cetera, et cetera. And if you guys cut it down, I mean, to what she's suggested, I guess we'll just have to live with it. But, you know, and the, and the provision in there of having to tear it down, I mean, when we bought it, it was, you know, bank-owned. And so we, you know, it was longer than obviously thirty days vacant. So, I mean, we want to try to lease it right away, but let's say this tenant only lasts for two years, and someone else wants to put a different use into it, and it takes, you know, sixty days to market it, and another sixty days to get back through planning approval and so forth, it's not enough time to have to tear down a, apparently, they spent two-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand dollars building this little building. With the, you know, it has electricity and sewer and water. So, anyway. Did you guys have any other questions of us, or?
I appreciate your comment. So, yeah, let's, I, Commissioners, what, this is a public hearing, so I, no one else has come up to speak. So at this point, I'll, Commissioners, what questions do you have for the applicant? Commissioner Workman?
Um, I don't know if I have a question for the applicant necessarily, as I do for staff. I, I have no questions.
What, okay. Com, other questions of the applicant? Nope? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Before I forget it, I, at this point, I'm going to close the public hearing. And Commissioners, your pleasure.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Workman, you have the floor.
Um, I guess I kind of have a small tendency to agree with Vince over there that, I mean, we can't have a showroom in there because there's no space for a showroom. But if there were to be sales incidental to online postings or something like that, would that be something that we could work into this? Just to keep the availability of, you know, more options on the table?
Commissioner Workman, could I interrupt just one? Deb, could you, could you please put the screen back up that had the red lines through it?
We recommended it last year.
Okay, now, go ahead. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt. I just thought that was good to have up there.
Do you want me to repeat that, or?
No, the reason is, is this is a planned unit development. Again, it's a zoning district. You look at any zoning district, there are specific uses that are listed. There are specific parameters for how it's going to be used. There's a floor plan for all of the uses. There are building plans for all the uses. There are the operational information. And we don't have that, except for the coffee shop. And that's what the entire issue is. This building was built specifically for one franchise coffee shop. And that's what limits the potential there. Staff, the planning commission, the city council, we could say you could do anything you want out there. But that's not how PUDs work. The applicant's responsible to bring in what they want, to tell you what they want, how they're going to operate it, the conditions under which they'll operate. And then, the planning commission holds a public hearing to see how those specific uses and operations relate to other properties, relate to the comprehensive plan, relate to the zoning and the uses for the particular site. Because we don't have that level of information, that is where the problem is. You can't just get rid of the PUD because there are two buildings on that site. So unfortunately, that is the way that zoning operates here and in every other city. It's, it's just the way that, that business is done. And the reason for it is, again, to follow the requirements that are set out for us.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Dang it. Commissioner Workman, do you have any?
I guess I would put that in the same scope of when we discussed, you know, sports training in an industrial area where we need to have a groundwork or a framework if we're going to allow something that isn't traditionally allowed.
Correct, and that would be an ordinance amendment to allow that within whatever zoning districts, subject to those conditions. That's different than when you have an individual site application for something. If they had floor plans and the operational information for all of the various uses, then you could adopt that, and it would be part of the PUD zoning. Because they don't have that, that's where the issue comes into play.
So are they going to have to come before us if smartphone repair doesn't do well, and all of a sudden, they want to switch to bakery sales? Or is that something that we can just work through staff without having to get an escrow and everything else set up?
What staff is suggesting, and this is the first time in the thirty-something years that I've worked in planning, where we have recommended something like this. The uses are more than what you specifically have documentation for. If they want to do these uses, staff felt that they would be appropriate under those conditions. They could come in and get their respective permits, their signed permits, et cetera, and do the uses that are listed. For anything else, they would need to come in and amend the planned unit development.
Okay. Thank you, Deb.
Sure.
Commissioner Levy.
I'd like to just follow up on what Commissioner Workman mentioned. I can understand that the building is small, that there'd be no showroom. But if they had a website, if some business had a website, people ordered it, could they come and pick it up there? That's sales. I don't have.
Again, without knowing the specifics of it, that's the issue. If they had an idea of a business that would operate under these types of conditions, and you could roll it in and specify what it is in the PUD, yes. But we don't know that, and that's where the issue is.
Commissioner Benke.
Thank you. I, I think I keep coming back to this, too, that when this was started, that the reason for the PUD is the two buildings on the slot. Right?
Yes.
So, so the fact that the coffee shop is there is the reason there is a PUD. And the PUD encumbers the property. It's part of the property. And it, bank-owned or not, it, it is recorded with the deed.
Yes.
And anybody reading the deed should know that this is there, and this is the restrictions that go on the property. So the only way to take the PUD up, it sounds like, remove the building, you can remove the PUD.
And then, you can do any of the uses allowed?
Anything you want. But you got to bring it back, because, again, this is, this is, this is an improvement to the property over and above. And, you know, to get the second building, they basically had to come in and say, this is what we're going to do there. So to come back later and, and do any of these other items, you really have to do the same thing over again. same thing over again. This is what we're going to do there. Deb, was there any discussion at all with trying to eliminate some of the traffic around the building? The extra drive aisles? I mean, they basically have two-way traffic here.
Yes.
And it was, I know that even that had some points with the original approval as to why they needed them going both ways, and there was some discussion about, well, people coming in, people going out. In reality, traffic never really works at this, at this location.
The, we did not with this particular applicant. The background from the 2004 report did. They had to do a traffic analysis and a traffic study. You're correct, there are, the way that it operates is people would come in, there are two accesses, whoops, I keep doing that, two accesses to the property that are along Greenwood Drive to the east. So you have the two driveways there. The south driveway is shared with the daycare operation, and then the north driveway, and you have traffic that can come in the north here, come in, make their orders, and then funnel through and out this way. You have traffic that can come in here, come up through, and then go out this way. The, the circulation is not, that's something that we would not likely recommend, but they thought that because the coffee shop was more limited than, say, a larger McDonald's or something of that sort, and because the primary hours that they were targeting were earlier hours before the office spaces opened, that it was acceptable for that. If that's something that the planning commission would like to, you know, restrict or discuss or include as a condition, you have the parameters to be able to do that.
Right, and closing the driveway actually made it even worse because when you go on to Greenhaven, if you go north, your only access is up, all the way up to Burnsville Parkway. Literally, you can't get out anymore. Frontiers Road continues west, east, until you end up on Burnsville Parkway.
Exactly.
And I don't have any more questions really.
Commissioners, other questions? Commissioners, I, you know, the, the parking loading, I remember when, I remember, I think they were videotaped at the time because I remember seeing it, but I don't think they recorded them. There was a fair amount of discussion. I believe that I, it doesn't feel good to me that we have to limit this stuff, but I understand why we have to legally with the PUD. I believe this is a happy medium from the standpoint of giving the property owner the opportunity to make the, the property successful. And from a parking loading standpoint, typically, we look at that from a standpoint if, if the operation is going to cause parking issues on a public street, and it's got, there's got to be tremendous backlog to get back to a, to a public street. It's all contained within the applicant's property. So I would be in, in support of this and, and give them the opportunity to try to make this building successful.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Benkey.
Yeah, I'm struggling with the thinking of it as what is being presented actually supports the change and outside of the financial side of it, which to me, from my, all my understanding, we're not supposed to look at. I really don't see the, the changes, the deviations to the code as being supported by the application. And I can't support it.
Commissioners, other comments?
I want to give this building a chance to succeed. I think when it was originally built, the County Road Five and Highway thirteen project, I don't know how close we were to that, but considering that and the lack of visibility and kind of the obstacle that came with that, I'd like to see this building stay. So I think what we have in front of us is not, it's not too constricting and it's not, I think it gives the applicant room to try. So I would be voting in favor of this tonight.
Commissioner Singh, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, Commissioners, this building was, was a, was an experiment, if I want to call it an experiment, when it was built as a coffee shop. I think the owners of the property have now come up with ideas for making this building useful and provide services for the people in the community. And I would agree with Commissioner Workman that I, I, I'm leaning, I'm, I'm leaning towards supporting it. And so I think let's give it a chance. The applicant has to understand that some of the ideas they submitted were removed because of, our hands are tied, we cannot have those in, under this, this PUD here. And so I, I will, I will support it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Singh. Commissioners, other comments? Commissioner Walter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I find myself in agreement with Commissioner Workman as well. I think we have a, I, I'd like to see this work as well, if possible. We've got owners who are interested in that as well, and I think this is a good, good compromise, so I'll be voting in favor.
Thank you. Commissioners, Commissioner Levy, any comments? Okay. Commissioners, I would stand for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I moved that the planning commission recommended to the city council approval of the PUD amendment application, subject to the following ten conditions as presented by staff.
A motion on the floor, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Walter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
And the motion carries. Staff, do you have the division of the House?
Yes, thank you.
And that'll also go in front of the city council on Tuesday, October fourth, unless I've been lying to everybody all night, so.
That's correct.
Thank you. That brings us to item number seven, updates. Commissioners, do you have any updates for the commission? None from Commissioner Staff. You're going to hand out the draft something? That's always exciting.
I will, a draft agenda for next planning commission meeting. Monday, October tenth, we have two items planned. Echo Park Elementary Schools, planning an office and classroom expansion to their building. And then before you, tonight, or before you that night, will be a ordinance amendment for the Gateway Industrial Medium Zoning District to allow sports performing, sports performance training centers as an interim use. That was before the city council work session, during their last work session, so. As far as other updates, just a reminder, comprehensive plan committee meeting, next meeting's November, I wrote this down, November fourth, which is Monday night at 6:00 p.m. at the maintenance facility. I don't know if you have any other updates, Deb?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Nothing for us, Ms. Garros?
No.
How can we go home without something from you?
Excuse me, are you sure about Monday night, November fourth?
That's correct. The.
Election, November eighth, which is Tuesday, that?
No, the eighth is a Friday because it's my fortieth class reunion.
I probably have that wrong. Let me take a look.
November seventh.
You're right, November seventh. Thank you.
You're just thinking ahead.
That's comprehensive.
Like Commissioner Benkey, you're thinking ahead.
He is always thinking ahead. Glad we clarified that point. With that being said, would I, I would entertain a motion.
So move.
Move for adjournment. Moved by Commissioner Singh, second by Commissioner Benkey. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. And the motion carried. Thank you very much and have a safe drive home. Thank you.